The recording is rolling.
Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting of the Inland Wetlands, this regular meeting of the Inland Wetlands Commission to Order on February fourteenth, twenty twenty five at seven oh
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, thank you. February twenty-fourth at seven oh, seven oh eight P M. It's like seven oh eight to me back there. I'd like to start with introductions. To my right, sir?
Nicholas Jordan, Commissioner.
I'm Neil Monroe, Chairwoman.
That's perfect.
Jolene Drucker, I'm covering for Amanda's recording secretary tonight.
Dave McCollum, Inland Wetlands Agent, and online we have
Chuck.
Attorney Chuck Anders, Attorney for the Commission.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time I would like to see Pat Parifort for Laura Ferguson. Thank you, and I would like to just put a general reminder out there that the, about the use of personal electronic devices. Please note for the record that any personal electronic devices used by Commission members are for the purpose of reviewing materials located in the Google Drive on the town's website. Okay. Let's see. Dave, are there any amendments to the agenda for this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you for asking. We have one amendment to provide reimbursement to Mr. Jordan in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars for his attendance of the Connecticut Association of Wetlands Scientists Environmental or Annual Meeting and Environmental Conference on March eighth, and that would be under New Business.
Okay, is that noted on this?
No.
I need a motion.
Make a motion that we add such item to the agenda on the new business.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, we can discuss, okay. Any discussion after this? Okay. Any other amendments or changes?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay. See. All right. With that, I believe we begin, and we are going to start this evening with an executive session, so that will require me to invite the public to please make us out in the hallway and we'll be happy to invite you back here. Will we need a motion?
Yes, you need a motion to enter into executive session, and then I would advise you to invite myself, Attorney Chuck Anders, and Jolene Drucker as guests. Just as a quick side note, to Susan Clancy, you are attending this meeting remotely. What will happen is you will be, for lack of better words, put into the waiting room for this Google Meet while the Commission is an executive session. When the Commission gets out of executive session, you'll be able to rejoin the meeting, so if it looks like you're being kicked out, for lack of better words, that's not what's happening. You can just refresh your web browser to stay in the waiting room, and then, like I said, when we get out of executive session, you'll be able to rejoin the meeting.
So at this time I would entertain a motion to enter executive session at seven eleven P M.
And make sure you add in invites.
And I would like to invite Jolene, sorry, I don't have your name.
That's okay, Jolene Drucker.
Jolene Drucker, Dave McCollum, and Attorney Charles Anders to join us in the executive session.
So moved.
And just for the record, it's the purpose of the executive session is to discuss pending litigation, specifically Mark Borchkin versus Inland Wetlands Commission of the Town of Bethel, that's in the Judicial District of Danbury.
Thank you for that clarification. So I have a motion on the table, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're in, you're in, Kevin?
I'm in.
Yep, are you going to vote aye or nay, or we are entering the executive session?
Oh.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay. Sorry, just threw me in the ringer, I'm fine with it.
Yeah.
Forty minutes to get here for me to stop.
Recording.
Yeah, stop traffic.
Yes. Glad. Let me see if she's still out there.
No, she's not, I don't see her.
Okay. If she comes back, I'll let her back.
Okay. Do we go with applicant?
She didn't say.
Okay, so we are now reporting again, we are back in session.
Right, we're resuming the meeting now. Seven thirty-eight.
Seven thirty-eight. Okay, which brings us to
I'm back to Doug.
Site plan review, turn number seven, excuse me, number forty-seven, Star Lane Construction of an On-Site Subsurface Seismic Disposal System Stormwater Management System Driveway and Regrading Activities Associated with a New Single Family. Can I see that we have Mr. Vesta here?
Yes.
Hey, good evening, Doug Vesta, Fresh Engineer, represent the applicant. I guess we, the sidewalk was canceled on Saturday, so I guess we need to discuss when the sidewalk's going to happen again. We also got comments from Dave, staff report, and we got comments from Tom Ritchie. If you like, I can go through them real quickly, didn't have time to respond to everything. Plan to review, revise for the next meeting, before that actually, so get this back into their hands, review everything, and go from there. I mean, everything is addressable, I just, that's pretty simple, we can address everything. So we can handle all that, what Todd's asking for and what Dave's asking for, so.
So on behalf of the Commission, please accept my apologies for having to cancel the sidewalk.
Okay. I didn't get there, so they called me on Friday, so I gotta get down there, so it's good, so. So I guess the first thing I want to figure I want to do is the next sidewalk, yes, and right.
And leave that to the board to schedule.
Yep. So let's very thoughtfully choose a date that we know that we can all make it to, so that we don't end ourselves in that situation again.
I will say, if I may offer, Madam Chair, daylight savings time starts on March eighth.
Okay.
Notice, I don't know how much extra time that offers people after work, if they want to try to do something on a weekday night after they get out, I don't know.
That is much more feasible for me personally, because in upcoming weekends at work.
None of the member of our Commission retire, so he's much more readily available.
Although I canceled last Saturday, sorry.
I don't know what your, do you work during the week also, Nico?
I work during the week as well.
I was going to say, can I access for most people?
Six, when do you get off?
Five thirty. I can do mornings, like weekday mornings. I work in the evening.
Monday through Friday, or Monday through Saturday?
Tuesdays and Thursdays right now.
You work in the evenings on Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Yeah, Saturdays, Sundays.
I do a Monday evening.
The third.
Don't mind me, I'm just looking at the calendar for March.
Five on Mondays usually.
Well, if Sunday's almost seven, when that changes, so if we want to do like six o'clock on Monday.
I am working right now. So Civil Twilight, if I'm reading what time and date says correctly, is at seven twenty-one P M, starting on March ninth.
So six o'clock, I do six, six thirty. I don't need more than an hour out there, because Twilight also doesn't include blue light, which is going to give you another twenty minutes of light anyways.
So after the day, I'm going to work on the Monday the tenth, you're trying to?
I do that, I do that. But.
I am going to get my electronics out in order.
The tenth is on Monday, that's correct.
By my name.
The other thing to consider is the weather. For the time being, I'm sure you all know right now, a lot of set of crampons or ice poles, it's a roller rink out there on the snow.
True, but it's going to be fifty degrees all week, I assume that most of that will be.
I would hope so, but this is New England, freak weather can happen at any time, so if you're going to schedule one day, it may be worth scheduling a backup as well, so that way you have it already in case you need it.
So speaking for myself, I can do Mondays after work, I can do Wednesdays after work, I also cannot do Tuesdays or Thursdays after work, it'll be too late.
Pat doesn't get an opinion.
Because he has to be flexible. How about you, Kevin?
Mondays, as long as Nico can make it work, because I know Tuesday, Thursday is bad, I want to do the ninth and sixteenth. Sixteenth has a backup date, six P M. Six fifteen, whatever it is. Does that work for you guys? I mean, we're trying to be considerate here, we're not even asking.
I can make it work.
Can you do Monday the tenth?
Could you do the seventeenth?
Tenth and seventeenth, sorry, yeah. Tenth and seventeenth, tenth, seventeen.
Seventeenth, wow. Yeah, that may be questionable.
If you could be there, I mean, that'd be cool.
My birthday, I can't really make. Okay, that's a good one, I was going to say, I can't party on a Sunday since I was thirty-five, so that, that's that ship is sailed for me.
Did we want to pick a different backup date then?
Do Wednesday then.
The twelfth.
Would you do a Wednesday?
No, the tenth and then the nineteenth.
Or nineteenth.
Tenth and nineteenth.
Okay, let me double check the nineteenth. Okay, so on the nineteenth, I don't get out until six, so.
Six thirty, we're free.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, that's not right. Five, did I get on five thirty? So I can be there at six.
Six.
Ten minutes away. So the smart chip right now.
Okay.
And the nineteenth has backup.
Check Twilight for the nineteenth.
This is a shame. Six o'clock, ten, six o'clock. And the nineteen. Six, six, six and six, yeah, we'll just keep it six, six and six.
Do we want to, do we need to read that in as a motion?
You should make that a motion, Madam Chair, that's correct, for both dates.
So entertain a motion for us to schedule, to reschedule a sidewalk or a special meeting on the tenth of
March.
March at six P M for Forty-Seven Star Lane.
I would like to make such a motion.
I'll second such a motion.
Any discussion?
None.
Hearing none, all vote?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries.
Done.
Do we need a second motion for the?
You might as well make it.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to schedule a want to revise the other one, is that what you said?
Which you can do, but.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to revise the prior motion to include the nineteenth at six P M as a backup date for a sidewalk at Forty-Seven Star Lane.
Second. Aye.
Any discussion? Okay.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries, Madam Chair, all right.
Okay, do you want, do you want to go, are we in the comments, and we have, you know, have you had a chance to redo the comments, any questions of the comments?
Of course not.
Is there anything that you feel pertinent to, that's unapproachable or might be difficult for you to address? You said that most of it is addressable. As long as that's the case, I don't need.
I've had discussions with Todd on some of his comments, so I was able to figure out what he's looking for and what he wants and stuff like that, so I've seen that we can address everything that he's looking for, and basically the comments Dave started, some are just, you know, recommendations or just general, just comments, just general comments he's got there, but I think that needs to be addressed, we can address them.
I have one question, I did see one comment, not to surprise you on the next thing to redo anything, but I remember seeing a comment to design it to a hundred-year storm.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure you were aware of that.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, we had this discussion last week, and you know, I talked to Dave about it, and then I talked to Todd about it, and it's awesome, and I looked at the numbers and it's doable, I mean, the system, I'm going to get bigger, but you know, I mean,
Yep.
They do, he is asking for an isolation trench to hold back, you know, back the sediments, to hold, you know, eighty percent reduction.
Yes, 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 and stuff like that, which we can achieve and stuff like that, so.
But then I think pretty much,
yeah, I don't need you to, as long as it's approachable, and then when it comes to force, we see the sidewalk, that's
right, and going the sidewalk last week, you probably wouldn't have seen anything anyway, just be up in all white.
True, well, yeah.
Yep.
So it would have been nice to always get it, but that's it.
For those of us who are slightly unstable on their feet, some of us.
So again, let's still, we should park at the cul-de-sac.
Yep.
We'll walk down from there, because there's not enough room to park down, down below with all the cars and stuff like that, so park in the cul-de-sac, and we'll just walk down the common driveway there into the property.
Okay.
That's fine, buddy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
So it's you on the tech then.
Absolutely, thank you for waiting.
And then just as a bit of housekeeping, the next regular meeting, because I would, I would advise this Commission to table this discussion or continue it to their next meeting on March twenty-fourth. Okay.
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
No, you don't need, you need a motion, but it should just be a consensus amongst the four of you to do that.
Do we all?
Oh, yeah.
Is there any discussion around table in the discussion till after our sidewalk on the next regular meeting?
No, I assume that was the case.
And then if you guys need it, we still have all sixty-five days of our extension time remaining, if the need arises to use them.
Because the time, does that let April something, you said?
Right, the day of the clock expires on April second, I believe, which is the Monday after, or the Wednesday after the Commission's next meeting on the twenty-fourth.
So that's a, that's a bridge we can cross at our next meeting. If there's any.
Probably have to give you an extension. Because that's our next meeting, the twenty-fourth.
Right.
So then Dave won't be able to give you a condition of approval or denial, whatever you guys are going to find to do, so we have to give you an extension for it, so for the April meeting then.
Right, 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 that's right.
Yes.
I just, I just figured I'd make sure you know about that, so it didn't catch anybody off guard.
Okay. Thanks, man.
Any other questions for me?
Nothing on this one.
Cool. All right.
So do we need a motion to table it? Continue it, okay, so I'd entertain a motion to continue our discussion of number forty-seven Star Lane to our next regular meeting on March twenty-fourth.
I would like to make such a motion.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all vote? Aye.
Aye.
So moved.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, guys. Thanks, Doug. Have a good night. Yep.
All right, moving right along, that brings us to Old Business, one oh seven Plum Trees Road, excavation of soil material, materials from a water force.
It's becoming a running gag, I'm sorry, we're going to have to pump this one again, I will let you know if I make a way with Audrey, which we're not actually unstable, so.
Okay, yo. Do I need a motion to table that?
Yes.
I would have a motion to continue our discussion of one oh seven Plum Trees Road to our next regular meeting on March twenty-fourth.
I made such a motion.
Do I hear a second? Hey, any discussion?
No, but we're going to have a lot.
You're also up, Dave, no discussion, hearing none, I'll call a vote. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, that moves us to number forty-one Dodging Town Road, I guess.
Hello.
Hello. All right.
Where was this?
Here, Mr. Pierce, did you have materials or more discussion that you wanted to bring to the table?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, Mr. McCollum?
I do, I have news. I made headway with the D O T. Well, I had to go ways up the tree to get anyone to give me any kind of meaningful response, I added them into Google Drive, but the two contacts that Mr. Pierce provided me at the last meeting, Scott Thibault and Rob Roberto Fernandez, they were the first to reach out to, along with the D O T Customer Care Website, and I ultimately got a response from their supervisor, which
I didn't see that on the, was that on the Google Drive?
What's that, the emails?
Yeah.
Yes, they were.
That's why that.
I apologize, those were added today.
I didn't see them.
The emails were added today, I apologize. So let me go into
I did not check today, didn't have time.
I have, I have notes on how I did this. I'm just going to fix this though right now. There we go, okay, so I reached out to Scott and to Roberto. They punted me to their boss, John Wells, who ultimately said, hey, D O T went out there, they took a look at the right-of-way, they met with the property owner last October to discuss this, and if you don't like my answer, you can, I'll take it up to the next guy. So I asked again. I said, hey, I don't, I essentially said, hey, I disagree with what you're saying, I'm going to point it up to the next guy, so I got an email from Carl DeLucia, who is a Transportation Engineer Three with the Bridge and Safety and Evaluation Unit in the Division of Bridges for Conda. So in other words, he works at the headquarters in Newington.
Okay.
His response was, hey, I went out there and took a look at the property, I was the head of the inspection crew, we looked at both sides of the water course, because apparently there's failures for the retaining walls on both sides, I also determined that it wasn't within the right-of-way and kind of has no responsibility, so I said, okay, but this map shows that this retaining wall was built as part of the road construction process, so I pointed it up again. And this time I heard from Mary Baker. She is the Transportation Bridge Safety Principal Engineer, and that is essentially the long way of saying she's one of the top people in the Bridge Safety and Evaluation Department for the Division of Bridges. And we had a very good conversation. And she said, yeah, you know, Carl, Scott, Roberto, John have all involved, been involved in this, one way or another, and I'm just going to repeat what they have all said, which is that the word that, or the sections of the retaining wall, the look that appear to be failing, they are outside of the D O T right-of-way. And I said, yeah, that's what everybody else has been telling me, but if you look at these maps, she said, I understand what the maps show, but again, the areas where the failure appears to exist is outside of the right-of-way. And she said, you know, have you looked through what is on file here at Town Hall, the clerk's office, and I said, yeah, I went through, you know, I didn't say how many years, but I was like, I went through pretty much however many property owners before, to try to find any easements or any maintenance agreements or anything else of that effect that said Conda is responsible for anything that's outside of the right-of-way, and I couldn't find anything, and she said, well, it's unlikely that we were finding anything, and if she had found something, she would have let me know, but she said, our records don't indicate that we have any responsibility to maintain anything out of the right-of-way either, and if I may quote her email, because I think it's just worth having this in for the record, an email, and you know what, I want to put up on the screen for doubly a good measure, if I can find it. Okay. Here we go. And of course, no, I've lost it. I'm sorry. There we go, maybe? Okay. That's one, is it, can you guys see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can't read it.
It's kind of tiny.
Yeah.
Or are you just going to share it to the main?
So what I'm going to try to do is I'm going to unpin this view.
You can see it here.
And we're going to go screen, both screen. And I don't know how to change layouts. Spotlights, beautiful, okay, this will get better, I promise.
Meanwhile, we're just going to read all your emails.
Dodging Town.
Yeah. I'm going to read Dave's emails.
All right, it may, it may be easier for you to read the screen that's behind you. Okay. And I quote, an email from Mary E. Baker, dated Friday, Friday, February twenty-first, we retaining wall on forty-one Dodger Town Road, Bethel. Good afternoon, Dave, as discussed, we did investigate the retaining wall on the south side of Route two oh two, she means three oh two. Similar to the north side, Conda is solely responsible for the maintenance of the wall that is within the state's right-of-way line as shown on the attached file entitled Bethel Right-of-Way Map nine dash zero two, sheet three of four. While Plan Sheet three of ten of the other, of the other attached files, scan underscore E R underscore A S B underscore zero 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 nine dash zero zero one four, and quote, does show proposed road channel. C T D O T does not possess any record of an easement to construct or maintain that channel in retaining wall on either side of the two oh two, she means three oh two, outside of the right-of-way. Should you discover more information from Town Land Records, certainly call me to discuss further, thank you, Mary. So that's, that's, I think, as official a response we can get, of course, she said, if the property owner wants to reach out to me, you can forward my content information and they can discuss with them directly, but it's, you know, the, what she was implying to me is that she's going to give the same response that she gave to me.
So long story short, state's saying they're not responsible for it.
Correct.
So that would fall on the town or the homeowner, and since it's a state road, it's not going to fall on the town.
That's correct.
And then we go into the homeowner who's been trying to fix it.
Right, I, that I understand.
I just want to make sure this is on the.
The state, the state has had that problem before, because the next bridge down.
I apologize, could you just state your name?
Okay, I'm Alex Roberts.
And your address for the record?
Forty-five Whipperwell Road.
Thank you so much.
I'm a contractor. The state has had that problem before, because where the power lines are that they've been working on for the past couple of months doing the clearing for the right-of-way, there's a bridge down with a lower residence over there, that used to be part of the state highway project at one time, and the state deeded over all these properties way in the past, because you'll see an arch bridge that's over there right now, where there's, there's an older woman down there, she had some bridge issues also, in this past thousand-year flood. So she had related to the same sort of situation, and the state just absolved themselves of it and said, we gave those things away so many years ago, we have no record of it.
So I do have one more question, Dave.
Yes.
Kind of a different thing, it was mentioned on the last meetings, doing that glass big flooding we have, that the state waived needing a permit, is that, do you know if that was correct?
I searched high and low on FEMA's website to try to find any waiver that would speak to this effect. And I saw none. You might want to check the stuff that we've been doing, because I was the guy that Steve Duchell, that prior talked about, working down in Oxford, and I also worked in Reading, where they also gave us carte blanche permission, as long as we weren't damaging the wetlands, to start pulling back and retaining some of the areas they.
You could play with they are, the town or the state or.
Amy Partey was the one down in Reading, she was, you know, in at that time. And then I worked on the project on Route sixty-seven for two months, down from Southbury down to basically the center of Oxford. And we were able to do just about everything, pull back all the banks, prevent any more flooding and trying to alleviate the situation. Granted, nothing's going to, to alleviate a thousand-year flood, I don't care what you put in there.
Right.
You can put in fifty-foot box culverts and it's not going to work.
But, but it was your understanding that the state basically set for the next.
Yeah.
Or those are local municipalities.
Right, yeah, state or local, I know.
But the state had management over everything, because the state came down every single day and inspected.
Can, can I offer one final clarification, so I, so I believe you're talking about, is it the Little River in Oxford where Route twenty-seven?
Yeah, runs directly across the street from the firehouse.
Right, right.
Behind the police station.
But it essentially parallels Route sixty-seven until, I guess, to like downtown Seymour, like the Monica River.
Right, okay, so I'm, I'm familiar with this.
Yep.
And because that is a state road, anything that's within the state right-of-way, if Conda wants to repair it, they don't have to go to the municipality. They go right to D E E P. And they have their own rules, unfortunately, that say, you know, if, if this is a state entity that's doing this work, you know, they only have to go to D E E P to get approval, and, and D E E P may have given a waiver for C T D O T to do that kind of work within the right-of-way, I do not know if that same exception would have applied for property owners that have butted the right-of-way. Now, the right-of-way on that, that river water course was in some areas a hundred feet off the roadway that we also went into to open up. Sure. So, you know, the so, so latitude on each right-of-way, you know, at Bruce's house, literally, it's ten feet off the highway, or the paved portion of the roadway surface at that point.
So it doesn't.
That they're absolving themselves from.
It doesn't even hit that first wall on the roadside.
No, no. So then what we're trying to do is, we're just trying to do a simple accomplishment of bolstering the existing, because the water that flowed through there came, it was such a high elevation, I had no time to take pictures, because I was ordered to respond to Southbury. And then from there I went down and we tried to rescue those people out of Oxford. Okay, so that's why I was sent down that way, but the water came down with such velocity and so many cubic feet per minute coming through there, that it scoured everything, right down to the existing ledge in front of Bruce's place. So now it's, it's scoured and it took out the footings, what we're trying to do is just do a simple repair. There's several ways that we can do it without affecting anything, but we got to do it before the springtime rains and the melting of the snow and things like that. We pin it, and then we pour new footings against it, whether it's using a shotcrete method or putting just boards and just carrying across the concrete, it does limited damage to any wetland.
And just carrying across the concrete, it does limited damage to any wetlands or anything that's in its place right now. Because everything from there, all the organics and anything that was in that water course at that time scoured. And went right down to the back of this property because this property goes way down, you know. And you've looked at the maps there, I'm sure you folks have done the research where it comes out to Taylor Road. So um, so we're just trying to do a simple fix as quickly as possible. Because if it starts going. Yeah, then the DOT is gonna be involved because once that wall comes down, then their road's gonna be compromised.
So I think the next step is the applicant has to put in an application that hasn't been submitted yet. With the material he has for us to review.
Well.
That's correct. Would there be any chance to do an expedited application?
That's my next contradiction.
Okay.
I understand those.
Right. First, we have to decide.
You need to decide whether or not the words that Mr. Pearson.
Alex Roberts.
Yeah, and Mr. Roberts is describing qualifies as a permitted use as a right or as a regulated activity. Okay. Never mind the materials that he's that he needs to show to you guys to show the work that he's doing. You 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 gotta cross that bridge first.
Right.
No problem.
Nope.
Okay, and then once you figure that out, then it's about, okay, what do we need for you to actually show us to substantiate what it is that you're doing?
And then just to clarify, that application, should we decide that it requires an application and an application is filed? The only thing that impedes progress on that is us reviewing the materials that are submitted.
Part of part of it is the materials that are submitted, part of it is statutory, you know.
Is there a minimum amount of time that we have to expend in reviewing? Fourteen days is the minimum amount of time.
And 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 that is and that is because in the unlikely events. That an applicant files an application for regulated activities and this commission receives twenty five signatures.
Right.
As a petition from the public, that forces your application to go to a public hearing. You cannot control that.
But that seems, from my judgment, to be a very unlikely event in this particular case. But yes, that is what it is. So it's fourteen days.
Right.
Okay, so the next.
Go ahead, if you'd interrupt me.
So the next scheduled meeting, I'm just reading stuff aloud here.
Oh, that's quite all right, quite all right. I retired from the city of Derry running part of the highway department.
So the next scheduled meeting that we have is on March twenty fourth.
Okay.
Um, and so as a commission, if we receive your application on March twenty fourth, I believe what you're saying to me is that we have a minimum of two weeks. So that theoretically, if we wanted to call a special meeting in between the March twenty fourth meeting and the April twenty eighth meeting, if we as a commission decide to do so. That we could actually render a decision on an application.
If if that's if that's the way you want to proceed, you can call for a special meeting at any time.
So those are options that the commission has in front of them.
Now, see, I, the only thing I'm worried about is that as we're coming into the springtime now, we're gonna start getting the rains. Everything's gonna change. Um, you're gonna start getting into the breeding cycle of all the. Animals that live in that water.
Yep.
While we got the lower water right now, which is why we want to do an expedited thing under basically emergency. We should have done this last year. When we had the thousand year flood because they were just handing out stuff left and right.
So we can't go back in time at this point, and I do understand the the.
But then what happens to the liability, say between now and a month from now when this finally gets going? If that wall starts decaying even more, then who assumes responsibility for the delay?
I don't have an answer for you on that.
Does the town assume responsibility for the delay? I know you're a volunteer board.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for you.
What what is what is this? Where is the where is the delay? What why is that word being put into the conversation?
Be- because if you're going to prolong it for another month just to be able to pour concrete on the bottom of this thing to stabilize it. And if we don't do that and the condition worsens, because springtime rains happen, we have been getting an increase in rains.
Right, right.
So then if.
But we're not delaying the process. We're following the process that is outlined in the town charter.
Right, it it here's.
You're trying to.
Don't worry, I'm not trying to push you.
This 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 isn't, this isn't your charter. This is, this is.
Our regulations.
This is Connecticut general statutes here, right? And let me say, this, nothing, uh. The the regulations that you have to follow as a board doesn't preclude Mr. Pierce from producing an application tomorrow. I not not to say that that is likely to happen, but if if Mr. Pierce had had all of his materials ready to go for an application, he could submit it. And if this commission had the understanding that that was going to happen, you could schedule a special meeting to happen sooner. You can schedule a special meeting to happen whenever you want.
Right, so respectfully, we're not looking to delay your project. We're trying very hard to try and accommodate your needs in this and and understand that that this is a. This is.
Respectfully, I'm just concerned that those environmental headaches that we have, if God forbid that wall starts leaning goes in.
Understood, but this event happened months and months ago and we're here now discussing it, so we haven't been delaying your process.
No, no, I'm not accusing any delay. I'm just saying I.
Could you guys get that out of them tomorrow?
I'm gonna interfere. But real line, come on, straight line here. I guess that the next step is we have to decide if it's permitted right of use.
Right.
Or if we want him to do an application. So before we even like prolong the discussion as what's gonna happen. We decide which route we're going to go because it's not up the table that this is permitted right of use. I mean, it's. I'm not able to make any kind of decisions here, but it's it's a discussion you guys, that's where the discussion could be right now. Make that decision and then like, you guys need to expedite everything on your side because you guys want it done immediately. So what we need to do is make decisions so they can.
My concern is if that wall goes in or moves or shifts, then I got bigger problems. And who's gonna incur the expense?
Okay.
Mr. Pearson.
And do do all of you have your regulations handy?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
No.
What I what I would invite you to do.
Which one is it you?
I would invite you to look at sections three point two and three point three, okay? Actually, well, really only three point two in this case. Use just permitted as a right. And and you're and you're gonna wanna specifically look at three point two, point three, point C. That's on page twelve. Does that, that's the section that really speaks to, you know, what you guys would weigh for this. For how we go forward.
Yep. And this is a discussion that we have had in the past.
That's correct.
Yeah, there's a conflict here.
We're having a discussion.
Yeah, it's the same thing we see with another recent application.
Right. Okay, why do you feel like it's different?
You're not adding anything, correct?
Absolutely not.
Keeping it the same. No, but however, no, but there's stone there now. So concrete is basically a stone structure. You're at, the wall is there, you're not adding more wall, you're fixing the wall.
So reinforcing the existing.
Such incident shall include maintenance, maintenance of existing structure and landscaping. But shall not include removal or deposition of significant amounts of material from or onto wetland or water course, which are not doing.
Yes, they are. They're looking to introduce new materials in order to reinforce.
What was there previously?
It's previously.
What was there previous?
Hang on, we're gonna go to the photos, so that way we have that up so you can see what's going on.
Yeah, it's not malicious and.
No, no one's trying to.
Can everybody see this photo?
No one wants this to be connected.
I'm gonna be the one that fixes it. If Bruce doesn't do it, I'm the machine operator. I'm the guy that does all the designing.
Hundred percent. We still have to look at our regulations and we still have to follow and we have to analyze.
So so this, this is the photograph that I took when I met with Mr. Pierce earlier this year. You can see where the water has undermined.
Yes.
The retaining wall to 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 some degree on both sides.
Yep.
Okay, so if thi- this is where you need to get clarification from. Al and Mr. Pierce as to what they want to do and where they want to do it.
Physically, what we want to do is be able to put a couple of form boards in here. We can also do it with a shotcrete rig like we do for pools. Form it up over here, pump the concrete down underneath, so that way it stabilizes this. It prevents any more scouring action from coming up underneath there. Okay, it's not the know all fix all. If I was gonna do this thing right, we tear the whole thing out and go box concrete all the way out. But nobody's got that money, not even the state. So we wanna come up here, do the same thing there and do the same thing here to bolster this. Because this is just dry stacked stone here with a little bit of concrete holding up on the top. And that was in there way before Mr. Pierce bought the house. This was back when the state originally did it, and the state did have right of ways through there, even though we can't show that stuff.
The the question I have, all right, this was done previously. Now you're gonna fix the undermining there.
Yep.
What's prevent the new from getting undermined?
We've got existing rocks up here that we have to go back up to and create an area. Where we can prevent the water from scouring up in the back there. So we've got to basically touch it up. That's just common maintenance. No. We we're down to the ledge at that point. All this in here is currently ledge.
So you won't by, and I'm just looking on the left hand side, that the gap there.
This gap here, yep.
You went out to dirt there, it got washed away. The difference in the future, you'll be on ledge, so the ledge will not wash away.
Exactly, and that will be pinned at the same time. So we throw some rebar in there, it's not going to want to.
What about wanting to getting behind the wall?
You're going to always get water behind the wall because there's no drainage system that's in there. That that house has been so old. In order to do that, we'd have to bring in approximately a hundred cubic yards of crushed stone, which would definitely. Uh, destabilize the backside of that wall because we don't know what's existing back there right now.
It just.
I'd rather not do that, but I don't want to narrow the throat because otherwise I'm gonna get a venturi action coming out from where the bridge comes out here. It comes down here and it's only gonna increase the velocity.
And when you're done. Let's say there's fifteen feet, she needs walls. There's fifteen feet left.
Yep.
And the the base of the um, riverbed, that's not changing.
That's not changing.
You're not adding or removing?
No, this rock here.
Right.
Was up here before.
Right.
Now it's not there. That's a one and a half ton boulder.
Yep.
So we might go and just move that off to the side a little bit, but I don't want to get down into this area down here because we do have some till areas where some of this material went down. And there are some nesting beds and stuff like that. We'll be careful for that. We'll put in berms. We'll use the hay bales to cut down any sediment. But when you're using the concrete products that we're using, it's basically as soon as it hits, it starts to set. And it will start to retain within twenty four hours. Okay, so we got like a golden time period in springtime before the waters start coming down.
Do you have to do anything when you're doing that concrete, like diverting the stream or anything?
No, no, we can work right around it. If anything, this little well point here, I can drop in a little half horsepower pump, pump it over the top of the rock.
Okay.
And divert it that way so it maintains the dry texture so I can get in there and stand there with the boots.
So you're basically asking to put it the way it was.
It's a maintenance issue. It's a maintenance issue strictly.
The way it was.
Yeah, we lost it all because we had the storm. And I mean, the water was literally up here and going on to his lawn.
And most sites of the properties are yours.
Yep, well, this is allegedly not the state's.
Right.
So it must evidently be Bruce's.
It's not another neighbor.
Yeah, no.
The survey shows for that section of the retaining wall, the right of way ending. Uh, up in this area here.
State was clear with that.
Yeah.
And what's the state gonna do when that whole hillside erodes then?
The state will accept responsibility because that's their thing.
They'll just fix the road like.
Just like we did in in all the other ones. Everything that we've done down the Oxford way, everything's got eight inch minus crushed stone up there.
And they're okay with waiting until that problem happens.
They don't have the money. What's what's happened is on the state level. All your guys that used to be the really good engineers, the people that we knew from ten years ago, fifteen years ago, Ray Plouffe, they've all retired.
Yeah.
And now the guys that they're acting engineers were the truck drivers. They bumped them up in position because we don't have the manpower. Nor do we have the people that want to go and do these jobs anymore.
So let let me ask you, being hands on the ground contractor who does this type of work, how many years?
I I've been doing this since nineteen seventy nine.
If you're working more, of course. So.
Oh, yeah.
If you were to leave. The bank the way it is, do you see this eventually caving in?
No, up in this area here.
Yep.
Um, if we leave it just the way it is, this is going to start to decay. We got another big storm. This is gonna flop. That whole top will fall in, creating an obstruction here, increasing the velocity which will elevate it, and then it's gonna start eroding the rope.
So.
When that happens, that will be the spectacular part because we're gonna close down three oh two.
And that that would affect the enjoyment of your property.
Not just that, that will affect the economy.
There's a reason I put it that way.
Yeah.
Sure, it I don't. I don't think any of us are gonna argue with most of this clause. The question that I think we have before us is, are they proposing to? This is it. It's the same conversation that we had in the panel to remove or deposit significant amounts of material from. Or onto a wetland or water course or diverting or altering the water course. So they're not planning to divert it. I understand that.
You have to, or you're not altering.
But remove or deposit.
But they are removing or depositing, yes. So I think what you are suggesting that we consider is, are they actually. Depositing if they are just replacing what was once there. And I think that's a, that's it sounds similar.
Effect, yeah.
Well, not completely, and in this point, but.
We're not affecting any any animal life or any plant life that's up in this area because it's already been scoured clean.
Sure, but that's not what we have to.
No, no, I understand.
Consider the.
Is there enough information to? And you also have an engineer that has a letter saying what is gonna be done. Is there enough information for that we have seen from the applicant to submit an application?
Right, all all what what you have right now, what you have right now is a letter from Mr. Dodo. Essentially speaking to how Mr. Pierce will construct the wall. Yeah, it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't speak to. How this may or may not be a regulated activity, whether or not there are any other things that you may need to, it it just, it just spells out the construction.
To order for him to submit an application, he has to go full blown plans and.
Well, no, no, it not necessarily.
Okay.
If may may I offer my two cents?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and and I don't, I don't want to belabor the point, but I just, I just want to make sure that something is very clear. Um, Julie, let me have you do.
I mean, like technically, it's a regulated activity, right?
Let's let's let Dave make his point.
So here's what I'm gonna have you do, where my finger goes.
I apologize.
Have that person follow that. Okay.
I didn't say shush. I said, let Dave finish making his point.
Okay.
Way back in August. Um, after the flood events, I had people on the phone essentially calling me, hey, Dave. My driveway, the the covert that crossed the slow stream is blown out or needs repair. Can you help me? I said, okay, what are you doing and why? Well, we gotta put stuff back to be able, for me to be able to reuse the driveway. Not a problem. What is it that you're looking to do? Well, this is what we want to do. Are you going in the water? Yes or no? Yes, uh, sometimes they would say yes, sometimes they would say no, sometimes they would say, well, the in an ideal world, we would like to be able to. This is what we had i- in mind to repair it. And I said, well. Because of how the regulations read, I can allow you to do something as an agent approval. I think I brought one or two of them before you guys. Where property owners repaired existing structures. You know, whether it was damaged from erosion or trying to replace parts of it. Uh, not necessarily to supplement it. I I I was able to do an agent approval application, no problem. Okay, sometimes they even had apparatus go in the water to do water the area. Much like Al was speaking to, so that way you wouldn't have to worry about waterfall or any creatures getting impacted. Or wha- whatever your argument may be. I said, not a problem because the the work is gonna be temporary. And you're only doing this to substantiate a repair. The words or the 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 lens that you need to view this through, if I may, is, okay. The intent is you want the water course to continue flowing in this area like it does now. Cool, but you're not necessarily replacing what was there because that's. Uh, a lot of this is still there. You are adding material to this because what this used to rest on isn't there anymore. Okay, so 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 you are having to add material that has been eroded or washed away. Now, whether or not there is water here, you know, you you need to decide, okay, i- is is nature trying to. Redirect where water wants to flow, or is it just going that way just because there isn't anything there right now? Um, and the same goes for for this side, you know, over here where. The water has washed some of the material away, perhaps not necessarily to undermine the wall as extreme. As it is down here, but still, i- i- the 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 principle remains. You you are trying to supplement the parts of the wall that exist. You you are trying to supplement the parts of the wall that exist. With parts of the wall that it used with with areas where the wall used to rest on that aren't there anymore.
And that was, that was caused by the stream coming out of here, hitting this wall.
Yeah.
Which exposed that, then it bounces off this side and comes over here.
Sure.
And because these rocks blew down here, it pours more water over to this way.
Right, so so so.
We're not trying to change any water.
Consider whether you're.
Yeah.
We're constrained by the language that we have in the regulations, so we're trying to determine about adding or depositing.
So so you so you have the words that essentially tell you what's a regulated activity and what's not. You need to decide if doing this work under the part of the retaining wall that remains qualifies as a regulated activity. On this side, and then the same goes with this side. But what what I would say is. As as my last thought, in instances where there isn't water presence. That is the the um the distinction becomes much easier because water courses out of the picture. You just have wetlands. And um what 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 I am inclined to say, I I I try to give property owners the benefit of the doubt. Is um if it's dry and there aren't any features to suggest. That where they're trying to do work is actually a wetlands, then they should be able to do the work. But you have to make that determination, you know, whether or not where they're looking to add the material.
You can actually see where the old rebar was that they had it pinned to when they first did this wall from fifty years, sixty years ago.
Sure.
The question, the question for me, Dave.
Nico, did you have something that you wanted to add?
I'm listening.
Okay.
I I like how you explain that. The the question that boils down to me is replace or add. You're saying adding, I'm saying replacing, because he's not adding outside. Like if he said, King, when I said, I I'm gonna build a wall in the middle, you're adding, nope. You're replacing what was there. So if I have a recipe I'm cooking, I don't know, you have sugar in it. You're gonna replace it with, I don't know, honey, you're not adding honey, you're replacing the sugar. Same thing here. There was sand underneath there, it's improving it. Like if he came in here and let's say there was sand underneath there. If he said, I'm gonna take the sand out, I'm gonna replace it with cement, same thing. Only thing now is. The sand's gone because the water took it out. And either way, the work has to be done. It has to, because in a couple of years. You have a gentleman here qualify saying, you're gonna have a problem.
But we're not talking about whether or not they can do the work. We're talking about the process with, through which they have to follow in order to seek approval to get the work done.
I think you're adding, I think you're not adding, I think you're replacing.
We're we're not extending the wall out any farther over this way, and we're not extending that wall out anywhere. I just want to move that rock. This rock stays because that still looks like she's doing some sort of stabilization, okay? But that one there, because that's the work diverting and pushing the water up into this corner, we just add our our boards, our form boards, same on that side.
So.
And then we we pin it.
Understood. That, so I will just say that as we consider. What this homeowner wants to do. I would encourage everybody to think globally about how this might impact. Others, property owners in the future, and what that might mean for the board.
Yep. I don't get to vote in this because I have to abstain because I have a very close personal relationship with the applicant. So I want to put my thoughts out right now, and they're steadfast and they don't need to be discussed more. In my personal opinion, reading those regulations through and through, very simple and straightforward, it is also our. It's up to us to determine then, and we need to make this decision, stand by our decision, whether or not it's right or wrong. You can think globally, but at the same time, you can't fix things globally, you have to fix fix things locally, and you have to do what's best with the knowledge you have. It is obscenely clear to me personally that this falls under right of use as a maintenance opportunity. And in fact, if it is not granted as right of use, it seems like a prolonged process to get it done anyways.
So are you contesting that you do not think that they are?
I think that they can very.
Depositing a significant amount. This is it.
No, no, I do not think that they're depositing, so replacing, they're not adding something that did not already pre-exist. A large event occurred that created damage to something that pre-existed on a property. I think that they are maintaining in bringing in for replacement, not adding. Uh I think that what they're doing is actually something we should be grateful for because if they were lazy homeowners and we don't permit them right of use to maintain. That it's gonna become a problem that is much greater in nature that community will have to. Um fix and we will have the repercussions from. So my two cents, they should have the right. Uh right of use passage to maintain their property, to bring it back to pre-existing conditions, and I think that is just. Very blatantly obvious to me in this particular case.
Yeah.
Those are my two cents, and I'm gonna sit back because I can't really add anything.
The only thing I'd like to see, and it would happen if it was an application, is a certified engineering drawing saying it's a. Permanent fix. But that's something I would like, but then. If it's a, if it's a. Well, the user right, user right, then that doesn't apply. So it's kind of like, I'm gonna mix, so.
In a perfect world, if we're going to do an engineer, you're gonna get an engineer to sign off on it, you gotta tear it down to the baseline, start again. There's no engineer on this planet that will sign his certificate. To to anything like that and say, hey, you can do this fix and I guarantee it. Because he's gonna be the one on the hook. You will not find anybody. And as far as the other driveways, like we had down on Route fifty-eight where we lost driveways down there.
Yes.
Those are classified under exigent circumstances. If I can't get an ambulance or a fire truck or anything up to those houses to go and help those people. We are all S O L.
Right, I I understood.
That's why we we granted those things, so that way the guys can go away with water.
As as I conditions to the property owners, you can go in there and have somebody fix it and think they did it the right way. But you you want to make sure that what they've done is actually the right way. And that it's not gonna be where an ambulance or some other vehicle has to access the property and they try to attempt to go over the repair. And something catastrophic happens. Not not to go to that extreme.
Yeah, we're not, in this situation, we're not at that situation. But that was only based on the stuff that we had on Route fifty-eight where we lost those three, four driveways.
Right.
Think thinking globally, my thought is, you're not changing. The direction of the water, you're not adding or putting anything in the wetlands. You're not changing the capacity of the stream, you're not changing anything, you're just. Taking the wall, what was there and putting it back there. You're using different material to do so, so.
Well, that's not to say that we didn't have, let's look at it this way.
If an applicant came in front of us for this and said, hey, I don't need to come here because guess what? There was sand there, putting sand back there. No, I'm just saying, it would be wrong, but we couldn't stop you because that's right away.
No, you, I'm sorry, I'm in a interrupt.
Alright.
Every person that wants to, say they have a permission as of right, they have to come before this board to substantiate.
Okay, but.
They they can't just do the work.
Right, but you're saying because it's not sand, it's cement, may may make it an application. Well, what if they came back and said, and not that they would, because it just washed away in a day, sand to sand, it's was sand, it is sand. They would argue that's right because I'm not changing anything. You follow my.
Yeah, but you're getting, you're gonna get lost in the minutia with that, and anybody of common sense would say.
I'm just trying to.
Uh what I hear, if I can try and gather here a little bit, what I hear is that Kevin interprets the statute that we have to follow. As the homeowner is not depositing significant amounts of material into the water course. Because that's the piece that we have to look at, because he substantiates that that's that replacing it doesn't equate to depositing it. You were getting at that as well, so is that how you feel?
Yes.
Do you want to weigh in on this, Nico?
Sure, it's. Uh I would have agreed, you know, and I may still, but just for the sake of argument. That that this is. Uh residential use.
So, based on the piece.
Alright, excuse me. So this is section three through uh three, two, three. C of regulations.
Okay, I'm with you.
It's the one you pointed out.
Good.
Looked at before, so.
Okay.
Um it, um I, we had another application before, it's not long ago, that was also proposing work. And uh shoring of the banks of the water course. Uh and I was. You know. Willing and very readily could practically see it as a uh use permitted as of right to maintain residential. Existing structures on residential property. However, through our discourse with the applicant and my fellow commission members. I have been continually, including tonight, uh reminded that, no, in fact, it is a regulated activity in there. We do need to weigh in because there's material being deposited into or out of a water course. Um the reg- the definition of a regulated activity in our regulation says, any operation within or use of a well in a water course or upland review area. Uh as defined in these regulations, involving removal or deposition deposition of material or any obstruction, construction, alteration or pollution of such wetlands or water courses. So by this definition, I mean, it's clearly a regulated activity, okay? But uh the question is, is it, you know, also a use permitted as of right? Are those two things mutually exclusive?
Do you believe the amount of material is significant?
So that's in our.
That's the crucial word in that section. Removal or deposition of significant amounts of material from or onto a.
And that's just up to our personal discretion as a commission.
That's why we're here.
Yes, and we should consistently apply that.
Right, so that's what I'm looking for is consistency, because I'm couldn't see some kind of a. Um you know, inconsistency and discrepancy or potentially, yeah, discrepancy in our in our decisions.
So do you have an opinion on that?
I'd like to know.
I think it's a use permitted as a. I think it's a use permitted as a right when you have, I mean, so these people bought property on water courses, right? They know that they have to maintain the water course and the basically the channel of the water course, or else their property will be undermined. Rivers move, yes.
They do, but. Yes, you do.
What would you?
I just, I'm trying to get an answer to Dave's question, as opposed to worrying about their maintenance of the issue. I think everyone agrees that this is a problem that needs to be addressed, but the question before us is, do you feel like the proposed solution? That they are offering fa- falls within right of use based on how much material they are depositing into the water course? Is it a significant amount of material?
Uh yeah, I'm just bringing up to to light the point that we had a very similar uh application. Of course, it was not a technical application, like nobody supplied, but we have, there's similar issues and. Um.
But then what you got also.
And yeah, they're regulated activities that are within the water course, so we have to regulate. My question is, how can we make that as easy as possible for these homeowners? To undergo this process, to maintain properly as we, I guess as best as we can see fit professionally, expert wise. To make the best fix possible for the public, you know, this water course and their property.
Okay, I have a black and white question that I think will make this very simple. Okay, for the right side, it perhaps may be a bit more obvious. For the if, and I don't want to bring up the photo because I don't want to open up that kind of worms again, but for the floor that you guys just saw. If you're looking at the right retaining wall with respect to the perspective of that photo. If, does does any work have to take place in the water?
Well, we're going to divert the water a little bit. I've got to put the form boards in there. We're gonna be standing in the water.
Okay.
However, none of the product that's going in to repair this is going to affect anything downstream.
Did, just not, just answer my, answer my question. So if if you were to do the work. On that right hand side, okay, a- and and you want to put material beneath where the retaining wall is now. Okay. If if that material goes in there, would you be um putting any material where material wasn't before? The flood event took place?
No.
Okay, so that so that that enters one side. Now let's go to the left. If you do the work underneath that section of the retaining wall to whatever it is, the rebar or the concrete or what have you. Would you be putting material where there wasn't material before to alter the flow of this water?
No.
Okay. So I I I think the the black and white question for this commission is. If the area is temporarily dewatered, okay, and they go in there and they do the concrete work. Or whatever it is that they need to do, and they, and whatever work that they do. Assumes that it's going to follow the section of the wall that's there right now, okay? So it's not extending into the channel inward into the channel itself. Does the commission consider that to be a regulated activity? I know it's a long-winded way of of setting a black and white question, but I think that's as simple as you can make it.
I'm gonna weigh in last.
I'm in a fence either way, so.
I'm rock solid, I don't.
Not a regulated activity and that it's a right of use.
I I I feel very, very steadfast that it is right of use based on the way the regulations read, my interpretation. And uh the the application of that's current current situation.
When when you say right, that's what I know, when you say right of use, if it was anything granted for right of use, do you still have. Authority to make sure it's done correctly?
Absolutely. So so my MO would be.
I I don't know.
Regardless of which way this goes forward, I'm having the same issue with Beaver Dam improvements right now. Where contractors are like, I don't know what to do. I've never removed a Beaver Dam before. It's okay, it's okay, I'm here. I will watch you every day before you start work, we go through a game plan of what we do. And then at the end of the day, I come back, and if you have any major issues, at least we know it occurred within that eight hour time span and we can fix it. And the same goes for however many days you're doing the work. I I don't want to have to hold anybody's hand, but if people ask me for help. That that's why I'm, that's literally what my job is, right? So if it came to that. Uh request where the commission was like, hey, we we want to be able to let this guy do the work, but. You should make sure that he's doing it correctly or within the guidelines that we told him how he could do the work, or what we told him was. A permitted use or a regulated activity, and if anything happens beyond that, then he'll have to come back before the board in one way or another. That is, that's a nice comfort point, giving the situation if you're on the fence as well, because he it it's like. I I have his job to show up in. I would say from when I when I first went out with Bruce. And and Bruce, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we're 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 trying to come to a compromise here. For how he thought he could do the repair work and what this commission needs to be mindful of with respect to how he wants to protect his property. So so we're 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 making our way towards coming to a middle ground. If the work that he wants to do is solely to the walls, which it seems like that's what he's suggesting. Okay, a- a- and and assuming that you're not putting the walls anywhere where walls haven't been before. Then you may say that that's a permitted use as a right. You may say it's a regulated activity. That's that's your call to make. But we, you know, re- regardless of, you know, what you choose. It would still have to go through a process with me where, okay, we're dewatering, we're putting in these controls. These are the days we're pouring, you know, this is the time we're gonna pour and 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 all of that stuff.
What's the difference between calling it a regular activity or permitted as a right insofar as?
Well, with 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 the regulated activity, it it involves a a bona fide application to this commission.
Which involves.
You know, what whatever you think you need.
I just need this, what he just did on record, that's all I know.
Oh, okay.
That's all I need.
Right, and well, then you also have.
For you to see it through.
But and then you also have your application materials that you normally request for an application.
Do we need to request any other application materials?
It's it's that, it's at your discretion.
So even if if it was right away, you verified it's being done correctly?
I have, yeah, I have to. I do.
I want to.
That that makes me feel much more better about my.
As a regulated activity.
Understood, and you can make that call, but you have to base that on whether or not. Understood, and you can make that call, but the you have to base that on whether or not it falls, not on whether or not you think the work should be done, not on whether or not you like their plan, not on whether or not it's a financial hardship, not on any of those other things. You have to base that on whether or not you think this falls in this regulated in in our regulations under this or not. It either does or it doesn't. But Kevin is saying that he and Pat is deciding. But Kevin feels like they are not depositing a significant amount of material into the wetlands or the water course because they are replacing materials that were already there. Pat was leaning like a seesaw.
I felt the same way about the.
So.
Well, you can feel a way about this one too. You're only held, you're only held to your own opinion. You don't have to follow ours.
No, absolutely not.
Shit about anything that we say here. You have to be.
But you do have to base it on, you gotta have an argument for it here.
So. Confirming. This has been done because it's a hazard situation.
Absolutely.
Okay. You have, you own both sides of the street.
Absolutely, according to the state.
If, including both sides, if, let's say, the material equals, I don't know, sixty cubic yards of sand or material that walked out, you're putting sixty cubic yards of cement back. I'm just using a random number.
Yeah.
A equals B.
No, theoretically, that thing should only require three, four, maybe five.
But A, but A aren't. So if four yards of sand left, you're putting four yards of cement in its place. You're not putting ten yards.
We're doing a one for one swap of what was there prior.
All right, and you're not adding any walls or any structures.
Nope.
So in other words, if I took a picture two years ago, and I take a picture when you're done, the only difference will be it was sand or cement.
Exactly.
Okay.
And quality of work.
While while we're on this thing, the can we also get clarification on? Because I believe Al had talked about moving relocating one of those rocks.
I want to move that rock because that's going to push all the velocity against the weakest point of the wall, the tail of the wall.
That rock was moved during.
The storm. I can reach right in there. My excavator operates using, because we do work on wetlands all the time. Okay, I'm one of the guys that um what is it, Boots and whatever it is there out of McCombe or whatever out of Massachusetts. They're the ones that call us when we have wetlands for mediation projects. So my machines have vegetable oil in them. So even if, God forbid, I blow a hydraulic line, it's not a hazardous thing. I live in this town. I grew up in this town. I graduated from this building in nineteen seventy nine. I have no plans on screwing up anything in this town.
I just have one general question too. Cement doesn't set in water. Is this a different type of cement?
You're going to be using a dryer bond mix and you come in with a dryer product, so it's going to be a five thousand PSI mix versus a three thousand PSI mix. And there may be a polymer a- agent added into it to adhere and stick better.
Okay.
Oh, no, we work with this all the time.
And and as you alluded to, there may be a dewatering component that is.
If I got to throw a pump in there because I don't want to have any cement washing downstream.
But that's something that you.
We got frogs down there. Everything's down there and it lives.
Right. Just take a look at that. I understand what you're looking to do. That's and that's temporary. It doesn't have any kind of permanent effect on anything.
We do more when we put box culverts in going across the water course.
Absolutely. So we had people of this back to doing other projects to be.
I I think the problem some in my head is also considering this globally. First of all, every applicant is its own application. I learned that the hard way. I was told that so.
I'm.
Sorry. No, it's right. I was. Um I would, I I was told very clearly by Tom Hall and other things, every application is its own application.
Based on its own merits.
Based on its own merits. Now.
Not use the same measuring stick.
Same measuring stick. Yep. The measure, I'm using that measuring stick here. The difference globally is nothing's being added, nothing's being shifted, A equals B, net zero.
Gotcha.
Own both side. I am not affecting a neighbor. I'm not affecting downstream. That that to me is, I'm not putting anything in there. To me, it's the word again, replace or add. I'm replacing, I'm not adding. That that's where my thought process is. Everyone else has made a difference.
Why don't you, we're we're getting, we're getting closer.
Yep. So we have two opinions that this is a net zero and that it does and it falls within right.
Soon as they've said they'll see it on.
So is this, is this a permitted use as a right? Yes or no? It's what I would ask, my chair.
I I am asking that.
Yeah, no, but I I'm asking them, I'm asking, I'm advising you to ask them point blank.
Yes.
Kevin is saying.
Based based on the guidelines that I'm reading, yes, it is. That's my interpretation.
And Kevin also agrees with that. So Nico.
I'm inclined to say yes.
Yes, it's a permitted right.
Permitted right of use um as we remember maintenance of residential property that this exists on property with the caveat that I mean, like, what's basically we need to guarantee that it's going to be done, right?
So that's what he's, that's what he's for.
That's.
Yes.
So 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 we'll get, we'll get to the stipulations here after we make the determination. So we, it sounds like we have three eyes.
I have to.
I'm an eye.
Okay.
But that's conditional, like, oh, they can do whatever they want.
That's.
That's what we're saying. I'm just, we have to determine the path based on the regulations.
So now last but not least, from now.
Okay, so I ha- I'm going to dissent and I I feel like it is not a permitted right right of use. I mean, a right of use.
Use as a right.
Use as a right. I hate that language. And I feel like um while I completely agree with all of the commission as well as our homeowners, that this is a necessary repair that needs to be addressed and needs to be addressed properly. I I don't have an issue necessarily with the proposed plan as it is. I feel like it is adding a significant amount, even though it is replacing stuff that was there before, materials that were there before. I feel like they are still depositing a significant amount of material into this area and that would push this to a permit process. And it is fine that I am um overruled by the commission, but I feel like it's important to say that that is my opinion on the record and my concern is that um other applications that we might review in the future might say the same thing, that they are replacing an amount of material that was already there but was washed away, which is a difficult thing for us to determine. In this case, with this photographic evidence, I am inclined to believe that that material existed there before and and has been washed away because the the photos, the photos pretty clearly demonstrate that, but that's not always the case when we're looking at applications. It's not so easy to determine. And I would hate for that to be something that came up in the future. So that's, that's the basis for my my feeling on that.
Okay. What's next?
So here's, well, it it's it's not a vote. It's it's a consensus, really. A- a- and what I would suggest is for you all to consider, and you all can say purpuri my ideas or this is the greatest thing since I spread, but so far you, all you have is the construction sequence from Ben Dodo. You don't have, you don't, apart from what's been verbally described thus far, you don't have anything that actually shows what's going to be done.
Do you want me to do a set of drawings? I can do it. I'm not, I'm not an expert. I design septic systems every single day. Because I'm in the room next door with Laura.
Okay.
Okay, all the time. So I can design up a thing.
I think.
I'm not going to pull anything over on you guys. My other career is in law enforcement. So I do accident reconstruction. I do the tactical. I have a hazmat background because I'm a hazmat tech, also a paramedic.
Okay.
Okay, so I do have the technical background for doing a lot of different things.
Okay. I I'm understood.
Understand. And I'll, I'll, yeah, I'm not going to send it to Ben because every time you do Ben, Ben charges a thousand dollars. For something like this on a simple repair.
Simple repair, simple. It's getting simpler. It can't. It's impossible. It's simple. I I'm already. Please.
I I gotta go.
I'm going to get the information.
They're nuts. They're nuts.
That's why I'm.
Unbelievable.
Yeah, it's crazy.
Yes.
So if you're going to give us a drawing that shows what it is that you're going to do, I think that would be very handy for the commission, for the commission for future reference. So that they can actually have something that says panelists put the paper to substantiate that this is actually a community.
Yeah, we're just gonna, we're gonna.
The other.
Thank you.
The other recommendation that I would make, and this is just to definitively rule out whether or not an engineer would be required. I don't know if this repair work that's being done would um prompt the need for a building permit because of the existing height of retaining wall with respect to what's going to be added beneath.
The repair.
Right, right. And.
My inclination would be no, that they don't need a building permit, but I I would have to.
I can talk to Joe and Chris in the morning. It's not a big deal. I used to babysit Chris when he was little, so.
Okay. And and I think, I think.
It's more or less, what you're doing is putting the footing.
Yeah, that's all we're doing. We're we're repairing what was damaged.
Right, right. And and I think if if this commission was so concerned about having an engineer look at what Al prepares, if they do say that a building permit is needed, then yeah, if it's more than four feet, you're going to have to get a P.
Dave, I think. You're not going to get a P that's going to sign off on it because you got to tear the wall down.
Dave, I think you need to know what you need to make sure this is being done correctly. And in the course of this whole thing, if it needs an engineer, then it needs an engineer. Okay, but we won't know that until we get down the road. We need, I I want to hear from you.
Down the road is right now.
This is it, right?
This is it. This is it. Oh, this is it. But.
Dave, what would you need from?
I'll, I'll go and do the design. I'll give it to you and then we're just, once you say yay or nay, then we're just going to go through and try to get this thing stabilized as possible.
Right.
Once springtime comes, it's a moot point.
Yeah. Right. I I I am trying to exhaust any reasons why going down the road, I would say no. Okay, that's that's why I'm going to the nth degree right now, because when I do get all of this stuff, I can just be able to look at it and say, yes, thank you. You gave me what I need. You can start doing the work.
What is that list? I I guess that would be the.
So 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 we've already got the sequence from Ben. That's good. We have a survey that Ben or Al can use to show me the sections of the retaining wall because it's highlighted on the DOT survey. So we know where the work is taken. That's great. So that's that's two things right off the bat. Now, the third is what the thing Al's going to build or whatever it is that he's doing is going to look like. And he's going to draw that.
We do this every single day. It's caging a footing so that way we can put the wall back.
Okay.
I wanted to support. The drawing so that we can.
Can you put that into this notification, the notification for a permitted use as a right? Is the, did he fill out, did they fill out the the?
Right, right. So 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 to so to formalize this, I will have all this paperwork done and you know, if whenever, whenever they want to start doing the work, I technically I can allow them to start doing the work before the next meeting. Not say that they'll have everything done, but if they did, then what I could say is ex post facto, they've given me all the material to substantiate a permitted use as a right. And you guys, as a formality at the next meeting, would say they've given us everything we've asked for. We can make this ruling because we have everything that shows what they're doing and yes, it's a community service, right? And then it, then we're done. Then we're done.
Can we, should we make a formal thing where we give it to, hand it to you as um due authorized agent?
If if you want, if you want me to do an agent approval, we can do that. Not a problem.
Is that a thing?
Yeah.
My, I'm not, like I said, I have to abstain, but my my answer is pretty simple. Dave knows what you need and make sure it's provided to you and since you're going to be the one looking over to ensure that it's done correctly.
I can, I can speak just from the standpoint of the building department. David, if you got that drawing from him and that was given to Chris, who does have an engineering background and who would be the one to make a determination whether it requires an engineer or not, he has to be, you know, he makes that determination. Ultimately, he would look at it. If he says this is good, it doesn't need to go to an engineer, we would give it back to Dave to ultimately this good to go. If he makes the determination that it needs an engineer and that he needs more information, it's kind of out of everybody's hands anyway. It goes back to David and he says, uh, that's great, but you need an engineer.
Don't, I mean, that's, that was the course you expected to begin with, correct?
Yeah.
I think that's, I actually am, I even though I, I know that on skin of the game, I just feel much more comfortable with you in charge, knowing that you do still have your feet on ground regulating the activities that are going to take place. So it's not carte blanche, it's not like you're going to go out there and just start swinging shit around. You're, you're being regulated anyways, you know? This is um, I I'm going to sit just fine, knowing that is, and would you be able to send an email to the group and yourself just indicating those things that you're, so we know what it is that you're requesting?
I I know, I remember. I'm easy to get along with. You can, you can send me the emails and stuff. I'll do.
Al calls my office tomorrow. I get his contact information. I give him my.
I'll stop in the office tomorrow morning. It's not a big deal. I got to see Laura anyway for a couple of other septic that we got going. Plus, I got to see Joe and I got to see Chris so I can do up some drawings anyway.
Okay. So then we have a consensus? Or do I need to formally get the consensus?
You should get it formally.
Okay, so I'm going to request a formal consensus as to whether or not we are going to require the homeowner to submit a formal application or whether we consider this to be right of use. And you are abstaining, sir? Okay, so Pat?
Right of use.
Nico?
Right of use.
Okay, I'm going to say permit. Mo can carries her right of use. Yes, it's not a motion, but whatever. This is for right of use.
Okay.
Um with the stipulations that we discussed.
Right.
Okay, can we, can we move forward?
Yep.
Beautiful. Thank you guys so much for coming.
Thank you for being patient.
Dude, you should be in charge. Bruce is tired. So we just let Bruce.
Yeah, yeah.
Understand where he's coming from.
I understand completely why you're frustrated. Absolutely.
No, he's been good. He's he was welcoming us on the property, welcomed me to go check it out, so.
Absolutely. Yep. And if there's anything, uh tomorrow morning, I'll give you my numbers. I didn't bring any cards or anything. So if you have any questions anytime, just give a call. Everybody in town knows how to get ahold of me.
Correct.
I just think it's pretty cool. The machine runs some vegetable.
Yes, it does.
Anytime you're working and stuff, I just finished a job down in North Carolina where we had to do that, so.
All right, thank you guys.
It's for the Army Corps of Engineers, so.
I'm going to move along.
That's even wealth and knowledge.
On our agenda to get here tonight and it is nine o'clock, so we are going.
You pulled it a wringer. I saw what you did, Joe.
You're going to pull us to new business?
I apologize if I come off.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Police background, stopped, I've been a cop for twenty nine years up in Woodbury for the state police, so.
All right, can we have new business before us, right? We have one seventeen. Thank you so much. Chestnut Ridge Road re-subdivide the property into two residential lots with a new driveway and a wetlands crossing. This new lot to be served by an underground utility, private well, private septic.
Okay.
We have no more um information that we're doing on, where was it? I forget the address.
The one on.
Yeah, Rockwell Road.
Are you talking Rockwell?
That earlier, we don't have.
He's sitting here for Rockwell, right?
Oh, I was just seeing if you had an update because I was waiting for, I didn't know if David, you're going to tell me.
We were in executive session.
No, I know, but. I don't know if there was anything that I don't think, Joe, after.
Nope.
I I I mean, uh, Attorney Andrews, um, you know what? Can you call me tomorrow?
Yeah, absolutely. I just, I didn't hear from you and I knew there's a meeting and whatever. So I just figured, and I kind of whatever, figured. I don't want this poor guy to, you know, so I just was.
Appreciate it.
I'll, I'll give you some.
All right.
Thanks for stopping by.
Have a good night.
You too. All right, so one seventeen Chestnut Ridge Road, sir.
Okay. How many of you were here in twenty twenty one? Raise your hands.
I have no idea.
Okay, was that your intention?
I don't, I barely remember that.
So. Pat, as the only member of this tour that was here then, this is a modification of a previous approval in the sense of this board has seen this property before.
Okay.
Essentially, the configuration of the lot is staying the same. What's changing, if I may speak for the applicant, or not to speak for the applicant, but just to, just to give this context, when they originally brought this application before the board, everything up here was the same. What they had done was they had the um alignment of the driveway over on this property to give a more straightforward access.
Okay.
Because this is very steep going up there this way. This property owner has um not been agreeable to them having a portion of this driveway on their property. So these people said, not a problem. Well, just come back to the commission and have the property, the driveway reconfigured so that the crossing happens down here.
Crossing the wetlands.
The water course. This is Chestnut Ridge.
So it's a little bridge, okay.
Right. So um it appears, without having done a a thorough review of the materials that happened, it appears that the length of culvert that would be used for this crossing is the same in length and width. Okay, but it's still a regulated activity. They're still putting this in. Uh, and you guys still need to go through that whole process, which is why they have an application before you.
So we just gotta make a move, decide how we wanna accept it.
Right. And that's whether it's a public hearing or is a site plan review. Just for the commission's recall, the last application that you reviewed for this was a site plan review. Okay, um, we do not have a new source report. I'm assuming the applicant would want to use the source report from the previous application, but I have not confirmed that. The the formal description of what they're looking to do is here on the application itself. And you may be able to glean some more of what they're looking to do in the drainage report. And I'm putting this all up briefly because I just need to excuse myself to the men's room. If you guys can be tuned in, that's why I do that. And you guys can listen over, okay? I'll be right back.
Should we hold discussion until you?
Oh, no, no, keep going. You're good.
Or who wants to talk about these?
Yeah. Items.
It's late.
I'm not gonna gossip.
Okay, do you remember this?
Yes, no. Fair, I I remember I remembered the water crossing. It wasn't a major thing. My personal thing is site plan review.
Yeah.
It.
Okay.
I don't remember any commercial thing with this. It's basically the same thing that was approved except from my understanding, Dave, except the driveway is now a big S, but where are the wetlands on the property?
Well, I think that you, at the driveway down at Chestnut, isn't that what he's saying?
Right, are there any of, because he, the driveway, I mean, I know the above is staying the same, but the driveway usually come this way. Now it's going, it's not going through any wetlands or anything.
I think it's crossing, this is the wetland here, correct? So I think it was crossing here, is what he was saying, and they were going to put a they just moved the culvert from from here to here.
Right, but there's no like wetlands here because the driveway used to be here.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
This is the water crossing. Right.
That that doesn't really matter right now. What matters is whether or not we think there's enough of a reason to call this as a. So we can discuss the new shit.
Site plan inspired by me.
I mean, I don't know. I plan.
Site plan.
Right, so it sounds like the discussion was also the site plan. All right, so then I would enter. Is there any more discussion we wanna have on this?
We'd like to, we could do that while we're here, it does.
Can we make the motion carry about these persons?
Yeah.
It's a jury.
Yes. Is there any more discussion anyone wants to have on the question of whether or not this should be a site plan review or public hearing?
Nope. No, not for me.
All right, then. I would entertain a motion to, oh, and it sounds like the consensus is. So I would entertain a motion to accept the application for one seventeen Chestnut Ridge Road as a site plan review.
Second, so moved.
So moved, moved by Nico, seconded by Pat. Any discussion?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, from the unanimous, the motion carries.
Site plan review.
Site plan review. Do you guys want to do a sidewalk?
I'm doing that westward, third, yeah.
Okay.
Fine.
No, that's fine.
Uh, perhaps we could add that? Oh, is it too short notice?
No. What do you mean too short notice?
Oh, to add it to the other sidewalk that we're doing to maximize on time.
We're gonna run, we might run out of time.
It's right on the road, right? It's all red peril on the road.
It's dirt on chest. I don't think it's fully over.
Can I walk to it and just see it from the road?
I don't.
We always need permission before we are.
Yeah, I I I mean, I mean, the 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 lion's share of the regulated activities, assuming that this water course is the only wetland area of the property.
That was Pat's question. We wanted some clarification on that. Is there any other wetlands?
That is an excellent question, and I have a I have a question onto the applicant to, for that very same reason, because there's a drainage swale that they are proposing to relocate. And I would like clarification from someone on the applicant's team for whether or not that's actually an intermittent water course or it's just a drainage swale.
So can we re, can we can we table the discussion about a site plan, I mean, a sidewalk until after we have the answer to that question?
Yeah, it's up to you.
Was that the one that they just put it in there to do a water break before, because it was so steep? There was one, maybe a different application. They added a swell because of the sheet floor.
I don't think so.
Okay.
What do they call them on mountains, like trails, like waterfalls or something where I?
Yeah, no, this is, yeah, this is not, this would not be a water.
So we we can push that conversation to later. We've had plenty of times. Is that relocate everybody?
Yep, everywhere.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Then, moving right along, we needed to add an item, new new business. Now, look for the language here regarding reimbursing Nico.
Hundred dollars for.
Hundred fifty?
It should be on your prep sheet, madam chair.
I am looking at my prep sheet and all the little tracks there that I made.
Ah, yes, you can distribute them.
It was hundred bucks and then for members.
I don't know what you paid.
It's this cost. I paid a hundred dollars for the members fee, thinking that we that we as a total of four members.
This one's fifty.
We're not.
Yeah, so there should be two of that, but.
So it's a hundred?
Oh, one hundred and fifty.
So.
Hundred fifty.
Yeah, there's there's one that's a hundred and then there's one that's fifty.
Okay. So I make a motion that we reimburse it.
I second that.
Nico, Jordan, a hundred and fifty dollars for attending the Connecticut Association of Wetland Scientists.
Meeting?
And coming in members for a meeting?
There was another one.
That must have been.
I'll second.
I second that. Seconded by Kevin. Any discussion?
Yeah, yeah, it covers everything. I just, the question is next year, do I go as this this guest at the one hundred thirty rate or this member? I don't know. They're squeezing an extra ten dollars out. Here, and it's gonna be based, I'm gonna see if it's worth it.
I second it.
Okay.
For twenty dollars, I get it, you know, I don't know what they're gonna offer.
I'm not gonna argue about twenty bucks anyways.
It's a it's a next year discussion anyway, so it's good. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. It has a second. Any discussion on the motion to reimburse Nico?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none. I will call the vote, Kevin.
Uh, yes.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, can I show the same because it's from a.
Yeah, I don't think you could vote for it.
Okay, so motion carries. Okay, moving right along.
To accept inland wetlands commission regular meeting minutes or?
One twenty seven.
One twenty seven, twenty five.
May may I offer a few amendments? Okay, so the um, there's there's bold text. If if you guys have the, let me bring those up for you. This minutes, minutes. Sorry, I'm trying to be quick.
No, no.
One twenty seven. Uh, a shoe.
Yeah, nothing to do to my sound. Is that all?
Oh, man.
Yeah, looking for the eighteen minutes for that.
Oh, uh, okay. No, hang on. Uh, no, there's, there's one side. Amanda asked me not to forget this, and there's a bold version of this minutes. There's there's language in the special meeting minutes that needs to be fixed. I don't have the bold version.
Okay, so should we?
Should we table it for the next?
We need to.
You can table the vote on this.
On the on the special one. I think the regular ones are okay. That's what we were just doing. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
We're doing the regs.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the inland wetlands commission.
Motion's already on the table.
Oh, it is?
It's already on.
Oh, then I'll second it.
So we just need a second. We have a second from Kevin. Yes, for the regular meeting, we have a motion on the table by Pat to accept the regular meeting minutes as posted. Kevin seconded it. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So moved, moving right along. We've decided that the special meeting minutes possibly need amending, so I would entertain a motion to table the discussion for approval of the special meeting minutes until our next meeting on March twenty fourth.
Motion made.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Let's watch.
Isn't it? Hearing none, I'll call a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so moved. Do Northwest Conservation District municipal funding request in the amount of two thousand six hundred dollars to.
Take a look at this.
Ta-da.
I was gonna say, this is.
This is the third time last night.
Okay.
Oh, is this one I, this is one?
Yes.
Just the one you were like.
So I finally got feedback, and this is the same request that's being, that was made to you guys at the January meeting, but now it's in the form of an invoice as the commission requested. And they specified the period that it's for here on the bottom right hand, left hand corner for fiscal year twenty twenty five. So it starts in July of this year and it goes to June thirtieth of next year.
Got it. And they just invoiced this earlier than they did the other.
Says at the top, it's due on seven one.
I'm sorry?
It says at the top, it's due on seven one.
That's my job. Listen, listen, man, I'm, I I do this every day.
Could be the question.
What's the prepaid item anyways? It says they do seven one. Yes, okay. So is there any reason, well, we're having a discussion around it. Should we hold the discussion?
No, no, I I can make a motion to accept it. I mean, I'm okay with it. That's that's exactly.
Seven one though, or do we pay in that one?
Oh. Oh, shit, otherwise.
I don't know.
To a prepaid account in the garden.
I make a motion that we pay uh Northwest Conservation District municipal funding request of twenty six hundred dollars.
I second.
To cover July first to June thirtieth of the following year.
Twenty twenty six. So I have a motion. I have a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
Is there any discussion around whether or not we want to immediately pay the invoice or pick the can?
Uh, just paying now, because they're gonna put it in a prepaid account and then expect it over that time period anyways.
You wanna, you wanna pay while you have the money to do it.
Yeah. That's Dave's contribution to the discussion. Pat, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, that's true, exactly.
You thought you had anything to say? Yeah, I would say we pay it right away. I like to get things off my desk.
I think there's funds that they they have, we have funds.
Great.
There's ones to pay for.
So discussion, any more discussion? Okay, then, hearing none, I'll call a vote.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Do do do, uh.
I did not go into the finance team on the town because I deal with everyone.
Did that already? Yep, we'll we'll get there in a moment. We have a staff report.
Pollen Forest Tea is still vacant. This is the only commission in town that has a vacancy on its board. Unfortunately, I don't have any friends, so you guys are gonna have to.
You don't have any friends, Kevin. I'm so sorry.
I know.
Yeah, if many acquaintances.
I have a potential lead, uh, but I'm gonna give give Dave some contact information for a potential.
Excellent.
Good.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, any more commission comments? Oh.
I have a sucker.
I'm sorry, staff reporting. Sorry. Any more staff report?
No, no further comments, man. Sure, thank you.
Okay, so um for commission comments, we have inland wetlands regulations review and discuss.
Nothing on that, no.
Mm-hmm.
Nothing on that at nine fifteen PM.
Nothing on that for me as well. I did have one comment that I wanted to make. I'll make it after Nico.
Oh, thanks. Um, okay. Uh, oh, just that, I was wondering if we could get somebody from the Northwest Conservation District since we were paying them to come and school us in uh, some of the subjects involving these water courses and and wall reparations and erosion that we've been seeing a lot of.
Okay.
It's on my mind and.
That's a good question. There was a lot of dysfunction over the last two years.
Maybe if we had a little, yeah, maybe if we had a little more, it's it's pertinent in our community right now, so we, our commission just had more uh, more experience in handling and education on it from a from an expert for which I think that could be good, so.
I wouldn't argue that.
So 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 do you want, do you want a presentation on what qualifies as a permitted use as a right? That sounds like you're getting to meet the material.
I mean, I wanna know, I wanna, I wanna a water course expert who deals in erosion and man-made repairs and and manipulation of water courses. That's why I, whether.
That makes sense, which follows after that.
Right.
Uh, oh, that relates to our regulations. Yeah, that would be great too, if there's.
Right, cuz cuz that's cuz that's, you 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 always gotta trace it back to whether or not something is a regulated activity. So uh, I I I think you need to go to the roots to say what is a permitted use as a right versus what is a regulated activity. And then you can explore all those nuances about erosion, sanitation controls and engineers and all that other stuff to the nth degree. But you but you gotta know what those two things are first.
Okay.
So.
Is that, is that a, is that a question for these experts or more of a legal question?
Well, I I I think it it it's both. Um, the folks from N W C D may have some insight for how to parse that, and if they don't, I'm sure they'll kick it up to someone from from D E E P or Janet Brooks or someone else of that effect, you know, who has a legal background with respect to environmental law. Um, and I don't know if that would be covered by the um educational fee that you guys just approved paying for. If it doesn't, I'll let you know. And, you know, one way or another, if if you guys are interested in having someone speak to you, that I'll figure out how to get it done, so.
That'd be cool. I would enjoy that, actually. That'd be, that'd be helpful.
I think that would be very beneficial for the commission. And not to harp on this again, but you have the educational training videos. Watch them. Because it goes into this stuff. Like, it's literally got three uh, you know, how many long hour DVDs that go into this? You know, so watch them. Sorry, anyway.
Yes.
So we've got it.
Okay.
He has trouble watching stuff for the division thing.
Okay.
Sorry.
Who has a DVD player? Did it come in eight track?
You have you have this in the non-DVD version?
I I think I I think I may have.
DVD, I just have no way to play it.
I I may.
You can stream anything online.
If if I can find a way to get digitized versions for you guys, I would do that.
Excellent. That'd be fantastic, because I I have it. It's sitting in my office closet, the mini DVD player.
You want V H?
No, I hate it. I hate it. I have a DVD of a V H.
Oh, one's already at Pat's house.
Yeah.
That would be. You're gonna make something.
I was gonna say.
I'll bring grounds. Okay, okay. That we'd have to call it a special meeting because there would be too many of us in a room together.
I'm not coming unless you're for this.
I don't think we can include that in the special meeting. Okay, uh, I have one comment as well from the commission, and I'm just I I'm very frustrated in this in this moment with not the people who are here necessarily, but with the commission as a whole, with our inability to rally to make it to the sidewalk that we scheduled and in in general feeling a sense of anxiety before every meeting, wondering if we're going to have enough people to hold the meeting and conduct business. So I have a request for all of you. A small request. When Dave or Amanda sends out the invitation to attend one of these meetings, whether it's a special meeting or a regular meeting, can you please R S V P and let him know whether you will be able to attend or not able to attend so that at least we have a heads up about what we can expect?
Because I I just, I don't want.
Somebody does that show. I let him know. I let him know.
When you get the email, which is well in advance of a meeting, Dave does not receive R S V Ps to those immediately.
Right, so.
I'm not calling any individual out, just noting.
I don't know when I got the email responded when I read it.
So for the people that have Google Calendar, they uh, they can go into their calendar and click yes or no. I think for people that.
It's actually right in the email. There's a button.
Yeah.
You don't have to have a Google Calendar.
Oh, you don't.
No, you can accept it without a calendar. It just won't go on your calendar unless you have Google.
Okay.
I apologize, but I didn't respond right away. I don't have a calendar.
Yeah.
I checked that email like every three days.
So so what is, what is the best way?
When it comes out, um, you know, the email that goes out, it it'll look like you can click it at the top. It'll say, do you accept yes or no? Then at the bottom, it also says, do you want to accept yes or no? You have to accept the second one on the bottom.
Thank you.
If you accept the one on the top, it doesn't go anywhere.
All right, so any questions on how to accept it or decline it?
So I'm in the process of switching emails.
You give me your new email address, we'll have it put in.
Text is the best way. I read emails like those emails like every.
So so text is the way going forward? Is that what you all prefer to to R S V P?
Big time.
It doesn't matter to me, so whatever will get the most responses so that we have.
I I agree.
I apologize. I had to go out of state for something I'm playing.
It's it's fine.
I apologize. If you can't make it, just let us know that you can't make it.
Just in general, it's it's a growing issue because we don't have a full complement and some commission members, not the ones here, don't come, so we are.
I make sure people aren't here that are on this commission, and I mean that every week because we're, you're the only people that I see.
Laura Ferguson is on the.
I know, I know her, she's never here.
And, uh, Jay Oldham is the alternate for the Republicans also is not here. And then we have an open seat.
Pollen Forest seat for.
As, as far as I'm concerned, we're the commission, just so you guys know. As a personal interpretation, I consider us the commission.
Except that if two of us aren't here, we don't have enough people to hold a meeting, or in, in the case of like tonight's application. You weren't able to vote on that, which is fine. Things like that are normally going to come up, and if we're running on skeleton crew, let's say I had the flu tonight. You can't hold the meeting.
True, but I, I would.
We can't hold that vote anyway.
I know. Um, uh, where, where I was going with that, and this is a question for you, if we feel that there's somebody that is on this board that is inadequately participating or not. Not fulfilling their duties as they promised to have done so once sworn in. Can we opt them for replacement or?
I already brought this up with Dan Carter.
Okay, I'm curious.
Already been somewhat addressed, and if you want to know more about that, you can talk directly to him if you sent him an email and asked. But if this goes to the, because this is a Republican seat that's open, and because these are Republican members of our commission that are not here, this is a discussion for the. Republican town committee who is appointing people or, uh, nominating people.
I, I could tell you, all this being on here is a constant concern. People, they just want to get people on a ticket. They get voted in and they don't show, and the question you just asked, it's asked every. Like, three years, four years, the answer is, no, you cannot, because they're elected official, you cannot, you can ask them to leave, but you can't require them. Or anything like that.
The, the only powers US commissioners have are. In the event that a vacancy exists for longer than sixty days and the first election hasn't had to upon it. This board can make an appointment for, for the, or the only thing that, the only other thing you can do is. Vote on, uh, executive officers. Got it.
So at this point, the open seat's been more than sixty days. So Nico's friend, but you can't, not have to be Republican.
They do. They, they have to, they, for, for the town charter, they have to be Republican.
Right, so then there's a request coming from me. Please take your time to just RSVP so that we have an idea of who's coming, whether it's a special meeting or a regular meeting. Thank you very much.
I follow that, and I also like to state that. RSVP, RSVP is great, but if you're not gonna be able to make it, the earlier the heads up, the better.
That's why I'm saying, so those come out days in advance, and then we can have a heads up, and then if we need it to, then if we, when I say we, I mean Dave, or Dave over here. Can start making phone calls to try and rally people who aren't usually at meetings, which is exactly what happened on Friday, when we found out that we weren't gonna have, or Thursday, when we found out we weren't gonna have a full complement. And that puts a lot of string on him also.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
Question, question, thanks. Um, regarding like the quorum. In, does a quorum that depend on how many people are on the commission?
That's an excellent question. So, so for planning and zoning commission, for planning and zoning, they have a seven member board. They need four members to constitute a quorum. It's, it's whatever the middle number is for majority. So you are, so, so you are, this board has five full members. For a quorum, you need at least three people to show up.
I wouldn't want to decrease the number because there's a reason you're the quorum.
And it's in the town charter, so that would be a.
Do you see where I was going with my inquiry?
No, no, it makes sense.
Like, if, why, if we're having trouble getting a quorum, assuming a quorum is just three people, which I was under the impression, which I guess is next up. Then we just increase the number of people on the board.
No, for us, it's.
That, that, that's all that is, is more of a level show.
And I don't think.
It's, no, it's, it's, it's a simple majority. It's a simple majority.
Simple majority, got it.
Which is fifty-one percent, whatever that would be.
So increasing the number of people on the board would not.
I just didn't know what kind of.
I think, I think.
But we also can't just increase the number of people on the, that's a much larger issue.
I think people gotta stop being concerned if, if it's a Republican or Democrat running. I know, but you could cross in, at the time of election, one party could cross endorse it. If there's somebody, let's say a Republican who really wants to be on the board. And a Democrat doesn't have anybody, and point out, I am Democrat, that's why I'm using that, saying the Democrats don't have anyone. Instead of finding someone on the street corner to bring them in to get them on the ticket, you could cross endorse that person who really wants.
They absolutely could, but they, but they.
No, but for the, for how the charter reads, the appointment has to be made. With respect to the party as a person for the vacant seat. So, the full seat is, was won by the Republican ticket. Don Taylor, when he ran, he was Republican. When Paul and Proda got appointed, he was Republican. You know, that, that seat, you know, just, just for. How the charter reads, it has to be a Republican.
But oftentimes on our recent ballots in Bethel, I've seen that the Republican candidate is also cross endorsed as an independent.
And the working parties, party, or working people, what is it the word?
Yeah, but.
They usually cross endorse the Democrats.
Was the person cross endorsed, but they also need.
Cross endorsement is not the same as party affiliation. It's not the same. They're two very different things. So someone can be cross endorsed. But if, if they're not in the, if they're not in the party. That the, you know. That, that they're registered for, then they can't, they end up, they can't fill that appointment.
You did, because you just said.
I saw if you cross endorsed, they can't.
So we need a Republican maybe too.
If, if the Democrats have somebody to run and the Republicans don't, if there's an open seat and the Republicans don't have anybody to run and the Democrats do, the Republicans. Could, and this could go in either direction, could say, I'll cross endorse that candidate because that's a good candidate.
Yes, I was saying.
But it would be like an uncontested.
Right.
Right.
Which makes sense to me.
Right, and if we had a town where everybody, you know, sang kumbaya and was friends, then.
And wait for the next budget.
Alright, so that's the end of my comment on that. Can I close that discussion on RSVPing?
Well, if you're okay with it.
Any other commission comments?
Nope, I'm good.
Nope.
Okay, then the last thing we have is public comments. I'd like to open up the floor to any of the public who would like to comment.
Sup, guys?
I see no one. Is there anyone online?
I'm not seeing anyone there either.
Alright then, you know what that means.
Second.
At.
Nine twenty-nine.
On.
Twenty-four.
Do I hear a second?
Just so busy lately.
Motion on the table to adjourn, do I hear a second?
Second, 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 second.
Okay, I hear a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. I'll call a vote.
Aye.